I'd like to call the Edco County Commissioners to order. While I'm filling out, could you bring over the prayer?
I want to give thanks today for the love that you've shown us and the blessing you've stood upon us as we celebrate the life of those who sacrificed to make things better for us, help us to continue to serve, and we will have a concern for our citizens to make life better for them, blessed as we make decisions and let it be done to please you in Jesus' name.
You received the minutes of the previous meeting, the general package, additional directions, amount of their motions. Say, question? All in favor of that, no matter what time, all opposed, here and done. At this time, we're gonna make just a few changes. Is there no opposition from the board in this agenda? Chris Evans, would you please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, good evening to everybody, it's good to see you tonight. We'd like to, if we could, it's item G on your agenda, we'd like to move up before scheduled appointments. We'd like to call the Chair Pleakerson, also we have Mayor Chair Knight here, they would come up. We want to, and also our family members present, Deputy Tommy Cohn, his wife, two sons, Alan and Prince, his sister Paula, and then there's other family members as well, we'd like to invite to come forward.
I'm pleased that the Commissioners with our previous I'm very pleased that this brought to attention the conditions of the Congress, so I'm kind of bold. And at this time, I'm gonna ask our Sheriff to read this resolution.
Yes, sir. Hold all our command staff to the stand, please. Resolution to proclaim January the 25th as Tommy Cohn Day, whereas it is our desire to recognize the accomplishments and service of individuals whose life and work impact this county and its citizens. And whereas nearly three decades ago, Thomas Tommy Cohn dutifully served as an Edgecombe County Deputy. And whereas on January the 25th, 1990, Deputy Cohn was killed in the line of duty when his patrol vehicle was struck head-on by an impaired driver. And whereas even now Deputy Cohn's sacrifice inspires the staff of the Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office to faithfully perform their duties and moves this Board to take action to recognize his service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Governing Board of Edgecombe County that January the 25th be declared Tommy Cohn Day in Edgecombe County on this the 5th day of February 28th.
Is there a motion? All in favor of that, no matter what time, all opposed.
I would say a few firsts. Well, I guess on behalf of the Cohn family, I would like to thank all those involved in making this day so special. It's truly one that's been on our minds every year, even though it's been 28 years ago. We'll never forget, and it's so nice to know that the county will not forget. So, thank you very much.
Was there another question?
Yes, sir, please. I would like to point out and introduce tonight, a couple of my here, I bet. We've got a few key roles in our executive team department, yes. Want to announce to Mr. Lee Dennis, who's been with our Maintenance Director for some time. He has been appointed as our Maintenance Director. Also Larry Moore, who's been with the Solid Waste Office for some time as our new Solid Waste Director. Ms. Stacy Booth.
Yeah, anybody gets mania, so can be recognized.
Stacy Booth was our payroll administrator, I've recently selected her to be our new HR Director. You know, Pauline retired about a month ago, so we're excited to have Stacy as our new HR Director. She's very excited, and we are for her as well. Also wanted to point out that, you'll remember, a couple of months ago, you approved the addition of a position to manage our flood recovery programs of a Disaster Recovery Director. We have, I've made the selection of Natalie Best, who is our new Disaster Recovery Director, who's here. And so, just wanted to recognize them tonight for you, they receive their faces, particularly our newest member. And certainly, we're proud to have them as part of our executive team.
Congratulations to those of you that were voted from there and from our newest staff number that's coming from without, okay? So, congratulations then. We know that you'll do us a good job, okay? Anything else that we need, you have to take care of. We have the scheduled appointments. What was that question?
Yes, sir, so we have here tonight Mr. Scott Bailey, who is with Carl Digs and Engels Security Advisors, to present to you our FY 17 audit.
We all do it well. Really what I wanted to do is just briefly walk through the results of our audit for the year in June 30, 2017, and then also to point out some highlights. Just to start off with, the results of our audit was what we call an unmodified opinion, uncleaned. So what that means is that, in our opinion, we believe that the books and records for the county are in all material respects in accordance with GAAP and the governmental accounting rules, known as GAS. And we performed our audit in accordance with GAGAS, which are governmental auditing standards, as well as generally accepted audit standards. So, the gist is that that's also known as a clean opinion.
You might stop to do it.
So, during the course of our audit, we encountered no significant difficulties with management. We encountered no circumstances that required us to alter our audit strategy, things that we didn't need to disclose to you. We're happy to report that we had no differences of professional opinion. And ultimately, we believe that we completed a successful audit. So, and I think at this point, I'll just kinda walk you through some of the, I got a little ahead of myself here on this slide, but just some of the general overview of the county. These are some highlights from the net position, which if you were to translate that to the business, you might also refer to this as the out sheet. What we have listed are the total assets for governmental activities, business type, deferred outflows, which typically are pension related, same thing for deferred inflows as well. Pension for related to compensated access, things of that nature. Total liabilities, that includes your short-term in terms of your current payables, things of that nature, as well as your long-term, long-term liabilities. All of those ending with governmental net position of about 27, 28 million. If we break it down just a little bit further, this is kind of a drill down into what the government-wide net position looks like. You can see that of the governmental activity net position, about a little more than 4 million. For the governmental activities is investments in capital assets. There's about 6,000 restrictions, either due to state statute or other spending restrictions with an ultimate unrestricted fund balance of 16.7 million. On the business-type activities, you might notice it looks a little odd there because you have about 36 million in invested in capital assets with a negative unrestricted balance of 2.4 million. But a lot of that is typically as a result of how we have to account for that fund balance. So really what we have to do is show how much is sort of wrapped up in the tax taxes. Here we have broken down the governmental changes in net position. So this is revenues, expenses, transfers between funds and other changes there. Just sort of running down the governmental activities, we're showing revenues of 59 million, expenses of 54 million, and a change in net position of not quite 5 million. Governmental activities, business type, which is your water and sewer and solid waste are revenues of 8 million, expenses of about 7.1, with just a little under a million in change in net position. What I've got broken down here is for general fund revenues. Got it broken down by type, I'll just run through a few of these, I know it's a little bit of an eye sharp. But what I've got is I've got the budget, the actual, and then also the percentage of that revenue line of the total revenue. So, ad valorem taxes obviously making up the vast majority of the revenue, that being 33.1 million and 52% of the total revenues. Restricted intergovernmental revenues making up the next largest share, about 28%. Local options, sales tax making up the next largest percentage of governmental revenues. If we shift over to the expenses, what we have listed is the expenditures by type. So breaking them down by general government, public safety, and this is laid out as they were budgeted. And then also their percentage of total expenditures, again, this is for the general fund, with health and human services making up 34%, public safety making up 45%, education 50% and under 20% of the total general fund expenditures. What we've got broken down here is, once we get past, again, we're focusing on general fund here just because that typically gets the most attention. But we've got the overall change based on those revenues and expenditures of about 1.8 million. And then there were some additional items such as sales of assets and proceeds, proceeds from loan and debt, transfers between funds, and then other changes. And what we wind up with in the end is a net change of about 3.3 million, 3.3 million increase in the general fund.
I have a question. Expenses related to Hurricane Matthew that we had to lay out upfront and that was getting by the federal government, is that reflected here in our revenues?
Yes, yes, those are typically reflected where they're seen.
When you see, so it shows up as an account receivable in some form, are we still owed a significant amount?
Not as, we are probably have gotten reimbursed for about two-thirds at this point. By the end of FY 17, it would probably be about a third we've gotten back.
So, a third, just your two-third remaining, that's not reflected in this number?
For the general fund, the way that that is accounted for is it's accounted for where it is seen. So, that remaining portion would not be.
So that would, but we spent the money, so that two-third would make it even a better scenario.
How much money was it?
It was a little over 2 million, 2.2 million. Biggest expenditure being our courthouse renovations.
So it's over a million, including when I was working with the government's financial. Maybe a year.
We'll see next year.
I'd like to see there's an IOU on that screen.
What we have broken down here is the fund balance and then the general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. What I've got is the total fund balance for the general fund, which is just a little over 35% of total expenditures. Taking that down a step and removing amounts restricted by state statute.
The less the revision is that the restricted.
Correct, and that is by state statute, so that is called stabilization statute. That brings it down to 14.8 million or 25.5% of total expenditures. And then if you take it down, and I neglected to include it, but if you look at, that's a page number, page 20 of the financials, you can see the unassigned fund balance of 11.7 million, which comes to 20.22% of total expenditures. The LGC, when looking at that, targets a rate of at least 8%. And in speaking with Eric and his team, they target a minimum of 15%, their goal was 20%. So, that fund balance remains over the county's 20%. Here I've got a breakdown on the ad valorem taxes. When we, one of the things we did, and this was also included in the disclosures, is we did an analysis of the 2016 property tax levy, the assessed value, the rate, the net levy. And then if you follow it on down, it breaks down what the net levy was, which was 30.8 million, with collections of 29.4, so a collection rate of 95.4%, which is a slight increase.
Do you have any peer group comparisons going to be collecting right?
One of the things I've been working on putting together is a comparison among similar counties. And that's something that's in progress for us right now. And it's a little bit, it's anywhere from about 95 to about 98%. And then certainly, as you get to some of the bigger counties where they have more sophistication, it's more high than that. That's in the neighborhood of what we typically see for counties the same size and type as that. And just to point out, I know we shared this before, but in the last couple of years, that collection rate has ticked up just slightly, but in a positive direction, thanks to, you know, Mrs. Lewis and her staff. And so, less of their collection rate. As with the general fund here, I've got a breakdown of the Water and Sewer Fund, a consolidated schedule. The budget numbers look a little different just because there's some numbers that are not contemplated in the cost of depreciation and things like that. So those are not actual cash expenditures. But we've made the budget work so that it reflects how the water fund activity was budgeted. So essentially, it was budgeted for a net change of zero. Ultimately, what we saw was a net change of just a little over a million dollars in combined water, sewer funds, leading to an increase in net position.
So this is water and sewer, not just water?
Correct, correct. Here I've got a similar comparison for solid waste. Again, as with water depreciation and landfill post-closure costs are not cash disbursements, so those are not budgeted items. So that variance there looks a little odd, but again, the way we displayed it was so that it follows how it was budgeted by the county. For the solid waste on net change in the, the budgeted change in net position was a little over half a million dollars. It ended up a negative change of a little over half a million dollars. Ended with a negative change of a little over a hundred million dollars. So it was better than was originally budgeted, performances of what it was budgeted. And that's really all I have. One of the things that we'd like to do is thank Ms. Lancaster, Mr. Evans, and Mr. Johnson and their team for the help in going through this process. It is a pretty intense process, a very labor-intensive process, and they have been immensely helpful in going through that. We had some findings which are included in your materials, and if you have questions about those, you can reach out to me. I've included my contact information and available for questions.
So overall, would you be willing to say this is a very positive thing?
Why not be positive for the French language?
I would, I would, I think the county has done some things, and they're continuing to do some things based on our discussions that I think will have a very positive impact on the county.
Do you think your audit would pass the muster with North Carolina Audit Department?
I do. And actually, they get to take a look at it, so.
Yeah, I'll be at the LGC meeting tomorrow, so I'll know about that.
Since we just got it, we don't know what they are, okay? So I guess we can't question them. You're satisfied with it?
I am, I am, and one of the things that we also include is the county's plan for remediating those findings. So, you know, it's not something we just dropped in and walked out and left them to face. And if you remember, I think at last meeting, I shared with you a letter from LGC about those findings. You know, they were aware of those even before the final guidance put on, period was put on the audit itself. And so we've been working through addressing those things, and in fact, a couple of things on the agenda tonight is related to addressing them. One negative thing? Just one? I wish it wasn't so complex. If you have more questions, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you for your time, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir, I'd like to invite up Mr. Jason Buras, who is with Trail Program, he's gonna give you a brief presentation.
So with all due respect to the auditor and all the great work you all do for Edgecombe County, let me just say that I have the best job in the world. I actually get to design hiking trails, designed to get kids and families unplugged and outdoors and reconnected to nature for their health and for the health of our parks. And so I do this type of work all over the country. I'm happy to bring an opportunity here to Edgecombe County to do some work to help get our kids and families moving and active and learn about nature. So, I'm just gonna go through the, Steph, did you take the remote? No, here it is. So back in 2009, or we started this program based on a report that was done on the Blue Ridge Parkway, where it was determined that only 7 to 11% of the people that came to the Parkway were bringing kids with them to the park. Well, Blue Ridge Parkway is the most visited unit of the National Park Service in the country, with more visitors than Yellowstone, Yosemite, and Grand Canyon combined every year. But only a couple of people are bringing their kids with them. So they wanted to start a kids program to get families interested in coming to the Parkway to learn about nature. So, we started Kids and Parks Track Trails. And what we do is we install a fun trailhead sign that attracts kids to come to it. And the trailhead sign houses different self-guided brochures that the kids can use to learn about nature while they're walking down the trail. And they can grab the brochure that's of interest to them. Each trailhead sign has four different topics in it. And so they can walk up and they can grab a bird brochure, or flowers, or bugs, or maybe there's a whole family. And so one person's doing bugs, and the dad's doing ferns, and the mom's learning about birds, you know? And everybody can grab their own topic and walk down the trail and sort of have an adventure using the brochure to learn about nature. But one of the things that we determined was that maybe coming to the Parkway as your first outdoor adventure wasn't the first place you wanted to go, because it's a national park and that's where the bears are at. So we started networking with other types of park agencies that were in communities along the Parkway to expand the network of trails to get kids to go to a city park, and then go to a state park, and then go to a national park. And so we do that through our website where we list all the different types of parks where you can go to grab these brochures and go for your hike. So we link to public lands, we connect community partners, and we do different types of trails. So we have hiking trails, and biking trails, and disc golfing, and suicide science, and geocaching, and we have canoe trail. So we do different types of activities that engage different people in different ages and different interests in the types of activities they want to do in nature. Kids that register their hikes through our website get prizes in the mail. The first prize they get is a nature journal with a sticker from the trail that they went to. And every trail has its own custom-designed sticker, which encourages them to want to go to a different trail so they can get that sticker from that trail. And they can put it inside their journal where they can take notes of the things that they saw and learned about. If they come twice, they get a patch, if they come three times, they get a backpack like this. If they come six times, Bandana, nine times, magnifying lens, the more hikes they do, the more prizes they get. They have to answer questions about their experience on the trail, which gives me a bunch of data that I'll go over in a minute, that we can then share back to our partners to say, hey, this is how many people that came to your trail this year. And this is what they said about their experience in your park, and this is where they came from. So you get a whole bunch of demographic data as well. So they get different prizes and the experiences are fun. So, brief history, again, we started on the Parkway, first trail in 2009. Started branching into the Forest Service and the state parks that were near the Parkway. Then we did a city park, and a Virginia State Park, and an Army Corps site. And long story short, we got a phone call from South Dakota, and they said, we heard about all this great work you're doing. Can you do this in South Dakota? And I worked for the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, and South Dakota's a far way away from the Blue Ridge Parkway. But we wanted to see if the brochures we had designed for the Parkway were applicable to anywhere in the world. Could you take the tree brochure we designed for the Parkway and take the North Carolina trees out and put the South Dakota trees in, and with very little effort replicate this program for somewhere, you know, 1,500 miles away? And without ever going to South Dakota, we did that. We went to the place, trailhead sign was installed, brochures were on the ground, we cut the ribbon. Now there's 30 trails in South Dakota. So again, one trail, five trails, and now 165 trails in 10 different states. And in Washington DC, there's a trail that goes around the White House. There's a trail on National Mall that goes from Lincoln Monument to the Washington Memorial. There's a trail on the beach in San Diego, and there's a trail on the beach in Wilmington, Carolina, Beach State Parks. And so it's a, has the ability to go everywhere. I actually was on the phone today with Canada's Provincial Parks, which is their version of state parks, and they want to do this up in Canada. So, it's pretty cool, here we are, 95 trails in North Carolina. Actually opened one last weekend at Hammocks Beach State Park. And so, I have a grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield, the North Carolina Foundation, they're the ones that pay for all this. Because they want to get kids and families moving and active as a preventative health measure, you're right. And I'm currently in the Orange Counties, and I'm not in the Blue Counties. And so I was at a recent nonprofit grant fair where all these different foundations from around the state were there to talk about money that they could give you for projects you want to do. And I met Helen Bowens, or she mentioned someone, she's already here. At that fair, she was standing in line in front of me, we were waiting to talk to one of the foundations. And she turned around and said Edgecombe County, and I quickly grabbed my map of North Carolina. I said, well, I don't have a trail in Edgecombe County, it's still blue, I need to have a trail in Edgecombe County. So I started talking to her, I gave her a packet of information. The next week she called me up, she said, we want to do it. Came down, we met with Helen, and Eric, and Yvonne Murphy, and we looked at the park here that's along the river. I got here earlier today, I looked at the park along the river, and checked out the park that was in the downtown area and Main Street and whatnot. I think this is a good opportunity for us to develop some brochures for you guys to help get your families outside. So, kids answer their questions, they get prizes in the mail. Over the last nine years, we've had 12,000 kids register their hikes through our website. Based on average, you know, registration rate, you know, about 3% of the kids that do the trails actually go online and register to get the prizes. So it's about 375,000 kids that have gone hiking, but we know that they're coming in groups of 3.4. So it's about 700,000 people that have done our trails over the last nine years. So, it's about seven hundred thousand people that have done our trails over the last nine years. And you can see how many calories they burn, and whenever you can kind of track metrics like this, Blue Cross gets excited, and they want to give you more money to, to do more counties, right? So, that's always good. The important part about like, for tourism stuff and things along that line, right? We know that fifty-two percent of our registrants, the kids that register, were first-time visitors to the park. So, they had never been there before. And fifty-five percent, fifty-four, are intentionally going to that park because they know that these brochures are there. They went to another park, they got their prize in the mail, and now they got to come to this park so they can get their sticker and put in their journal for that park, right? Eighty-three percent of our returnees are going to more than one location, and they're bouncing around. I've got kids that have done twenty trails. I get emails from parents all the time talking about, dude, my kids are dragging me all around. I got to go here and there. So, it's a, it's a really cool thing that I get to do. We got doctors that write prescriptions for kids to go hiking. It's pretty neat, right? Like, kids spend too much time playing video games. They're on their phone, they're on their computer, they're sitting down on the couch. Seven and a half minutes, or seven and a half hours a day attached to a screens. And seven minutes per day outside playing, right? So, doctors are seeing this as a health risk, so they're actually writing prescriptions, there's a prescription pad, for kids to go hiking on our trails. So, I installed a trailhead sign in the lobby of the doctor's office with this brochure that the kids learn about how spending time in nature improves their overall health. The doctor gives the patient this brochure, they write the prescription. The kids then go to the website. After they do their hike, they register, they enter their serial number. It actually sends the doctor an email, lets the doctor know that the patient filled their prescription and that the kid went hiking. They can go back into that kid's electronic medical record, enter in the data that the kid went hiking. The next time that family comes back to the doctor's office, the doctor can consult them. Where'd you go? How'd you like it? Have you been again? Have you tried the next trail? Here's another place you can do it. And so, we've, we've gotten a lot of awards for this. I've been to the White House twice. Actually, went into Michelle Obama's office and got an apple off of her desk because of this. It's pretty cool. So, we're here to be a partner to you all and get a trail installed. I have an MOU for Eric to sign. You guys can review it and take, I know Eric's hard to read it. Take a look at it. It's pretty simple. You can mail it back to me. I don't have to do it right, right now. But essentially, it's just a two-page document that says, we will design the brochures, we'll design the sign, we'll get it all installed in your park. You guys will promote the trail to your community, install, keep the brochures in the brochure holders. We'll give you the data about how many kids go hiking, and you tell everybody about it, so that's what I'm here to say. I'll answer you guys. Oh, so we have different, you guys have different brochures. I understand that there's some history in this town, or in, in Princeville specifically, as being the oldest, I don't want to, I don't want to botch this, but I know it's the oldest town or city founded by African-Americans, if I'm correct. So, we had done a brochure for North Carolina State Parks for Dismal Swamp. Dismal Swamp has a, they are a location on the Underground Railroad. And so, we had done a brochure about that park and the swamp itself being a, a location on the Underground Railroad. And so, we had developed this brochure. Helen had.